relatively easy result at that point. But. To totally leave them non-conforming, I think would be a huge mistake. When we have the opportunity to do it the other way. Commissioners, all in favor of that idea?
Favor of this.
Well, I don't know that we need to have a goal in that. Let's.
That's the consensus then.
Yeah, let's do that and then you can bring it back in the. Do we have a public hearing at the same time?
Oh, that was gonna be my next question is, do you want to look at this once from me before you set a hearing?
Commissioners, what's your thought on that?
Well, doesn't this, I don't know, do we have to set the wording or whatever for what C1's gonna be?
Right, that's what they'll do.
Well, most of the wording in C1 is already, it's done, it's in there. So if you go, if you find the zoning ordinance and you can pull it up online on UniCode, you can review what's in there. Most of it, I'm honestly not really inclined to change. Other than, you know, like a couple of these, like I don't know that, you know, commercial storage warehouses mean to be in there. I don't see that really fitting very well. But the rest of the stuff seems okay. And then we would add single, maybe even two-family residential under uses permitted by right there. I probably wouldn't change much else. The one that is gonna change more and would require more scrutiny from you would be the changes to the non-conforming chapter. So that'll be a little more complex in terms of how you're gonna think about it.
Let's hear from him first and then do a public hearing then at December. That's.
On both of them?
Yes. September or November? Well, November we'll hear from, yeah.
So then I'll have to be at the following meeting.
Yeah, we'll finalize that and then we'll schedule a public hearing at the following meeting.
Again, a public hearing without looking at it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
I agree.
If we were just doing the change to C1, we could probably just do it in November. But if we're gonna do it in conjunction with changing the non-conforming section, then. And that's gonna be more complex and I want to make sure that everybody understands what we're doing before we put it in front of the public.
And if you're gonna do a public hearing, it's better to do both of them at the same time.
Right.
Does just changing C1 just get people on their way?
Yep.
And then you have to do the amendment thing?
And if they're in a hurry, we should probably maybe do the one next month and then do the other one. It takes a while.
To do that too?
Yeah, it's up to you.
I don't know if they're in a hurry or not. Any ideas?
I don't know, I think.
Hey, you're quicker than butter.
Yeah.
Three more days. Let's, alright, let's do the C1 then.
I think that one's the easiest one to change.
Make that the public hearing in November.
Yeah.
And then if you can also have wording for the draft. The, yeah, the draft form at least for the non-conforming ordinance. So that we can amend that. And then we can do that in December.
Okay. Wrecking it up for a little bit.
Right, right.
Yep.
Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Commissioners, everybody happy with that?
Uh, and then you'll do the property or the zoning or the notices and all that.
Yeah, so the notices would go out next week probably. So you would, all who own property there would be seeing something in the mail within a week or two. It would be a notice that would say basically here, second Monday of November would be our meeting back here. And then there'd be a public hearing where you come out, make comments or whatever. So, and everyone that owns property in this block and everybody within, basically of those properties and everybody within 300 feet of that would receive that notice. And that would also get published in the paper.
I think that makes sense.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you for the comments, by the way. Okay, new business, part B, training presentation.
Alright, so. This is very similar to a training presentation that we did about four, five years ago for the planning commission here. It has turned over quite a bit since that time, so.
All new.
Dave was here.
Oh, Dave, you were here.
This is a little hack, he'll fall asleep halfway through, but the rest of you, this will be new.
What do you think?
So.
Thank you.
In the interest of just kind of getting you all up to speed on how all of this works and what your role is specifically as a planning commission, this is a relatively brief presentation that kind of walks through some of the main things that you need to pay attention to and the genesis of all of this and how it works. So. To start at the very beginning, we have, again, you as a planning commission cannot do anything without specific language provided by the state that enables you to do this. So we have enabling legislation. We have Michigan Planning Enabling Act, which was Act 33 of 2008, and the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, which was Act 10 of 2006. Now, those two acts replaced previous acts from the 40s or something. So these had separate planning statutes for townships versus cities and villages versus counties. And so there was all these different things. So in 2006, 2009, it took these three or four separate statutes and consolidated them all into one act for planning, which was in 2008, and this act for zoning, which is 2006. So obviously, the zoning enabling act is what enables us to do zoning. It contains a bit of specificity in terms of public hearings. So like just now when I was talking about how everybody within 300 feet gets a public notice and how that public notice has to appear in the paper and be postmarked for those people at least 15 days prior to the meeting, that language and that requirement is in the act. It says that very specifically that you have to do that. It allows for the creation of the zoning board of appeals. And I didn't include it in here, but it also contains a number of areas in which it preempts your zoning ordinance. So there is some language in the zoning enabling act which basically overrides zoning. So, for example, there, wait, no, there we go. For example, there's language about cell towers, daycares, signs, certain types of signs. No, RVs aren't in there. There's a bunch of stuff, mining operations, there's some level of preemption where the act just takes away local authorities, says, yes, sorry, this is permitted, we don't care, we'll get in about it, period. A bunch of that is in the zoning enabling act too. That doesn't usually come up, hasn't come up here much, but it could. Michigan Planning Enabling Act is what enables the creation of a planning commission. It directs and sets out the process by which you must follow to adopt a master plan. So we had that conversation a little while back about, and we did our five-year review of the master plan. And we talked about that and we decided not to change anything in the master plan. That was a five-year review, again, five years, that's in the Planning Enabling Act. It requires, CIP has capital improvement plan, requires municipalities to undertake capital improvement planning, which the city of Lowell does anyways. So you don't do it, but it is something that is required also by the Planning Enabling Act. Other important laws, so it's not just about those two. The other biggest one that comes into play for you all is the Open Meetings Act. And the Open Meetings Act basically states that because you are a public entity, a public body, you must meet in public. When we notice, you publish notices, when we hold hearings, if you have a special meeting, you have to follow those sorts of transparency guidelines that in the Meetings Act you must have. Just like on the agenda, there's always an opportunity for a public comment. If that's not on the agenda, that's out of the Open Meetings Act. A public meeting, you must enable the public to say something, whether or not it has any need to do with anything that you're talking about. So they can come up here, like we're gonna talk about McDonald's and they can complain about, you know, something that has nothing to do with it, it doesn't matter, they can do that and that's fine. It also requires some other things to keep in mind, actually, this isn't the Open Meetings Act, but for planning commission, you must have bylaws. So you all do have bylaws, by the way. Till we finally do that? Maybe that'd be a fun thing to do for our next meeting. They look like this. If you don't have them, you can certainly send them around. And so what the bylaws do is it creates, kind of sets out like how you conduct a meeting here in the city of Lowell. So how you vote on things, all that kind of stuff. You can have specific rules for yourselves as a commission in your bylaw. So maybe that's something we'll talk about next month. Time for me.
Were we all provided with those? When I joined this, I got a lot of this stuff and I didn't obviously.
Yeah, so for this. I might be in here somewhere.
Probably.
Should we all do our homework and bring that stuff?
I mean, it's not, it's not a super long thing. So this one that I have was stapled onto a 2018 schedule. So, I mean, at least every year or two, they've been circulated around to the planning commissioners. So some of the newer folks might not have seen these. But it sets out the officers, so. Chair, vice chair, secretary, meetings, when you meet, how you can call a special meeting, what constitutes a quorum, how you hold a public hearing, how you make a motion, voting, how your agenda is set up, general rules of order, things like that. That's all in your planning commission bylaws.
Elections.
Election of officers, yeah, part of that is a requirement of the act. Part of that is also specified in here. So again, and these don't require many kind of magic to amend. You can just amend it with a simple motion, a simple majority type of thing. Typically with the clients, we suggest that every few years, you have flipped through these and kind of say, hey, you just, one, it gets everyone familiar with them. And two, if something changes or you're not sure how to handle something or whatever, or something has come up that suggests, hey, maybe we should make this adjustment to our rules. It helps to do that. And the framework for your decision-making process is generally guided by your zoning ordinance and/or the zoning enabling act. Mostly zoning, we always try to keep rezoning in the act running in parallel. So the language is the same and requirements are the same. But when it comes to the decision-making process, the act doesn't really contain that much specificity for the most part. We'll just say that, you know, somebody shall hold a public hearing and do something. So then in the zoning ordinance, we can be more specific and say that the planning commission shall hold a hearing and must follow these standards unless that what the standards are in this government. So most of what we're gonna talk about is your job as decision-makers, because that is what you do here. As you decide, you decide on the McDonald's expansion, you decide on what to do about that baker, you decide on what to do about non-conformities in your zoning districts. So there's kind of four things that we've identified here that will help you make effective decisions, which is information preparation, deliberation, and documentation. I'm a big fan of number four and we'll get there. So as far as information goes, a lot of it is just the stuff that we as staff handle. So we inform applicants of what forms they need to fill out, when fees need to be submitted by, how much the fees are, what the meeting schedule is, all that kind of stuff. If somebody asks you randomly some of these things, unless you know it 100% for positive note questions, then say, yeah, I think it's this, but let me give back to you or refer to one of us. Because as public officials, you don't want to give wrong information to people. And then if people contact you, as important as you can keep a note of that. Because in some instances, you know, it's possible that people will try to lobby you, to try to sway you from your impartiality. And it is important that you remain impartial and we'll get to that in a minute too. So the application process, when somebody comes in and wants to apply for a site plan review or a special land use or rezoning or whatever it is, we have forms for everything. We have forms for PUDs, site plans, rezonings, zoning tax amendments, planal, you know, zoning compliance for outbuilding or something. We have a whole bunch of forms and there aren't deadlines for all that stuff. So for example, site plan reviews, three weeks before the meeting, you have to turn in everything. If you're trying to turn it in three days before the meeting, sorry, you gotta wait till the next one because that doesn't give anybody enough time to look at it. And then it's important for us as staff and for the planning commission to follow the same procedures. And so you've noticed over the last few years that you've all have been on here that when we have special land use reviews or site plan reviews, that we're kind of doing the same thing. We apply the same standards. And we review ingress and egress and pedestrian circulation in the same language. Obviously it's had a warning because you've heard it 15 times. But it's important to always follow the same procedure to make sure that you're making your decisions in a consistent way as it relates to every application that comes in. So your applications will require public hearings. A public hearing notice must contain the following, which is a description of the request, and this is what we'll write for next month. A description of the request, which will be these four properties are proposed to rezone from this district to this district and we'll list all the addresses that are affected by that. Time, date, and location of the hearing, whether it be the regular meeting, November or whatever, 11th or something. At this location. And then if they want to actually view what the amendment is, when and where, they can get a copy of that. So see how they get during regular business hours. These notices are mostly pre-written, so when I write them, I just change the description of the request, the date of the meeting, and a little bit about what's actually going on. The rest of it is pretty standard information about where they can get the information and all that. So it's not too hard to do, but again, consistency is important. It's important that we have all that information in there and they're written the same way for everybody. Notice must be given not less than 15 days before the meeting at which the application will be considered. So let me say there will be a public hearing on, let's say, November 15th. That notice has to appear in the newspaper on or before the first. That would be 15 days before that. Or, and for the ones that get personally mailed to people's houses, those need to be postmarked 15 days prior to the date of that meeting. So we try to keep them simple and use the street address whenever possible. I don't like using the permanent parcel number because it's just a bunch of chivalry numbers. It makes no sense to anybody. It's a lot easier to say 205 Main Street than it is to say 714 22 200 0 54, you know, whatever the number is. The city keeps an affidavit of the mailing and from the newspapers so it can prove if there's any question about it, like, hey, we sent this out, you know, here's our proof. And public hearings are generally required for most stuff except for site plan reviews. So special uses, rezonings, PUDs, all require a public hearing. So that's kind of the information part of it. Preparation, it's important insofar as it is practical and practicable to visit the sites in some ways, sometimes it's just a simple drive-by to make sure that you understand where the location is, what kind of buildings and other uses and activities are surrounding that area. Typically, you need written permission to enter the site. I think our application forms have language on there that say that by signing this form, I allow the planning commission to just enter my site or whatever. So I don't want you to just, you know, trespassing through people's backyards and stuff. But to the extent that you can get reasonably familiar with the site, I would encourage you to do that. So, you know, again, like for this hearing coming up, you know, at a minimum, you know, driver on the block a couple times, know all different, you know, the houses, where the buildings are, sidewalks, driveways. You certainly have to walk it if you want to from the sidewalk. Again, don't tromp through people's backyard and stuff, obviously. But fix yourself reasonably familiar with the site. It's hard sometimes, especially when there's a potentially controversial application, but avoid ex parte communication. So you might go onto a site to check it out and somebody might say, oh, that's Amanda from the planning commission. I wanna talk to her and bend her ear for 20 minutes about why this is a terrible idea. And then they've got you one-on-one outside of the meeting and they're gonna try to influence you. So as much as possible, you say, you know, yes, I'm on the planning commission, I'm checking it out and I'm not inclined to talk about it, I'm just here to gather information. And try to, you know, step away from that, you know, getting lobbied too much in those kinds of instances. And then lastly, be mindful of the Open Meetings Act. So I would not recommend the planning commission rent a man together and drive out to a site and walk around it prior to a meeting. If there's more than four of you together at one time doing some sort of official or quasi-official planning commission business, that can be an Open Meetings Act violation. So you can't have a majority of you together at any one thing that's doing official planning commission stuff. Yes, you can go to baseball games and barbecues and go to the football game and stuff like that without publicity, without publishing it out in the paper. But if it's something that's more official for planning commission business, then we need to make sure that we are noticing those meetings. And then again, when you're walking around the site or driving around the site, look at the condition of this. So the topography, the uses around it, if there's any water on it, natural features, what land uses surround it, how the site is accessed, how it's proposed to be accessed. So like with that baker, I made numerous visits to the site just to kind of get familiar with the property, figure out where the new driveway would be, how the sidewalk and the extra buffer would interact with Main Street, the lights and how big the building would be. Just kind of get a feel for it, how visible the site is, things of that nature. And then obviously, review all of the materials that you get in your packets. So in your packets, you'll get the application materials, you'll get a site plan of some sort. If it has to do with the master plan, look at that. If it has to do with the zoning ordinance, you can at least kind of review the zoning ordinance. Review our report, obviously, because we do most of the heavy lifting for you so you don't have to sit down and kind of walk through all the findings by yourselves in your own houses. We'll do that, we'll provide you our thoughts as planners for the city. So that's, these are our opinions, you know, you certainly are free to disagree with us relative to our findings at times, that's fine. If you have questions, write them down. It's easy to think of a bunch of questions when you're sitting in your house or in your office and you get to the meeting and there's 20 people here and you forget about, you say, ah, I was gonna ask this and then I forgot. So just when you're doing your homework, you're getting prepared, just jot down any questions that come up as you're looking at it and then we can go through those at the meeting. And then lastly, you know, I mentioned impartiality before, you know, avoid making, don't come to the meetings having prejudiced the thing. I mean, it's important to give applicants and the public, you know, the benefit of you're showing up as an impartial person. Yes, you've looked at our report. In some instances, our report will have an opinion in it, you know. Not very often, but a few that have written around here have a pretty strong opinion in it. And they'll say, you know, this is a terrible idea in more professional language. And so, but, you know, read everything, but come here as impartial as you can. And not having talked to the applicants, I can give it a bunch of your time to someone who is opposed to it. It's very important that you're fair. So try not to make decisions before hearing the applicant's presentation and hearing from the public. And also, if it's a site plan and you think they haven't done a very good job, it's best to not try to redesign the whole site for them, that's their job. So if you have issues with landscaping, if you have issues with how they have a building located or in drought or something, point it out to them and say, I think you need to move this, I think you need to do more of this or that or the other thing. But we don't wanna spend two hours sitting here and kind of fine-tuning driveway locations and number of bushes and all this kind of thing. That's the applicant's job. So it's your job as planning commissioners to tell them what you want and then they need to do that. And that goes for me too, frankly. I mean, just like tonight, if you chose the two options that you did, then you say, okay, you figure it out and come back to us with something that you think makes sense. So I will do that, I'll come back to that, I'll come back to the next meeting with this information for you and then you can accept it. Or you can tell me to make some adjustments and try again. That's all within your rights and your jobs as commissioners. So at the meeting, deliberation. So for speakers, there should be some degree of formality. And, you know, Bruce, this is mostly intended for you, but whoever's the vice chair here, Bruce isn't here. It's important for you as well, you know, during a hearing, especially one when there's a whole bunch of people, it's important to have some degree of order and formality to the process. So it's one at a time, it's not people just standing up yelling and screaming. My Parks and Recreation is a great show, but I don't like the way they hold hearings because everyone's just yelling all the time and driving crazy. So it should be one person at a time, come up here, make your comments to the chair, to the planning commission generally. The planning commission can't limit the amount of time you have to speak, it's usually two or three minutes. That can be modified, sometimes it'll be like this. You know, I've had instances where a neighborhood group or some interest group has hired a spokesperson or an attorney or somebody. And they'll say, hey, I'm gonna come up here instead of having these 20 people come up and each talk for three minutes apiece, what if this one guy comes up and talks for 10? And so that's within the realm of the chair's authority to say, okay, we will allow that to help move things along if one person can speak for many. Then for you all, as planning commissioners, you know, your, again, comments should flow through the chair. Your deliberations should be in the open. So if you have an opinion about some project coming up, you know, I don't want you, you know, on the phone with each other one at a time, kind of working behind the scenes. Talk to each other as friends and about the football game or something, not about this stuff. Save your comments for planning commission business or planning commission meetings. So have those open, honest deliberations out in open. Avoid making speeches, you know, sometimes, you know, I've seen planning commissioners that feel very passionately about something and they'll go on a 15-minute, you know, diatribe about why something is good or bad. And I'm glad that they feel that way, but I don't, I don't like the double speech-making thing. It should be reviewing the facts, reviewing what's in the ordinance, what's in our report, asking questions and things like that. Definitely express your opinions, you don't have to agree. You don't have to agree with each other, you don't have to agree with me. Not every vote has to be 7-0, it can be 4-3 or 5-2, that's absolutely fine, that's democracy. Use the zoning ordinance standards for making your decision. That's probably one of the most important things you can do as planning commissioners is fairly and objectively apply whatever standards of the zoning ordinance there are for that particular site. And if you go through there, like we do at these meetings, you know, Bruce will kind of, I will read them and kind of give you my thoughts sometimes. And planning commission, you know, Bruce will just kind of walk you through one point at a time. Hey, do you guys think this meets the standards of item A, item B, or item C? Sometimes it takes a while, but it's important that you do that, that you go through the standards and objectively figure out this complies with everything. And then once you feel like you have enough information to make a decision, make it. Don't abstain just because you're not sure what you're, what to do. If you truly can't decide, if there's too much information, and some of these meetings, it's like information overload, right? If there's a complicated application, if there's 15 people there and they're all arguing back and forth, there's absolutely nothing wrong with saying, you know, up at the table this for a month or you come back at the next meeting, I didn't think about this, I'm just here to listen tonight, next month we'll actually make a decision. So again, that way you can really make a thorough, careful, thoughtful decision and you're not just reacting to, you know, a passionate applicant or a group of neighbors is, you know, for, or against some kind of petition. Site plans that meet the standards of the zoning ordinance must be approved. So if there's something that is permitted by right in a zoning district and we go through the ordinance and they have all their landscaping, they have enough parking and they need their setbacks and all the other stuff, thou shall approve it. Doesn't matter if it's something that you don't like for some reason or another, you know, if you don't like, if you have some personal philosophical thing against, I don't know, a hurricane or whatever the case may be, okay, to that, if it meets the standards of the ordinance, you have to approve. That's kind of the end of it. But as you'll see, and as you have seen with special land uses in particular, some of those standards, excuse me, are a little, you know, depending on your perspective, you can go either way on some of them, right? Because it contains a lot of sort of subjective language. When you are making a motion, and you've all been through this enough times now, but there's someone makes the motion, then someone supports the motion. So I make a motion, then we approve the application for whatever subject to these conditions. We always have conditions. And typically, and you know, we don't do this as much here because we've already walked through all of the standards and kind of said definitively, yes, this meets the standard, yes, this meets the standard, yes, this meets the standard. So it is recorded. So it gets recorded in the minutes that way. But, you know, otherwise, it's important to say, I am approving this because it meets this, that, or the other. Like when we did the PUD for Riverview Flats, you had that very lengthy approving resolution, which was basically very long, written findings of fact that said, here are the facts, here is what we think, based on all the facts, we are approving it for those reasons and subject to these conditions. So it's important that your motions are, you know, they're official motions, they are made clearly so that everybody knows exactly what you're doing by making that motion and by approving that motion. One thing to keep in mind is if you have a motion to approve, let's say you have a motion to approve a special land use. And the motion to approve fails, three people vote for it, four people vote against it, so the motion fails. That doesn't mean that it's denied, it just means that it's not approved, so you, it's almost nothing. So in that instance, you then make the opposite motion, so okay, fine, motion to deny. And if you have four people that vote for that, then you're actually passing a motion that does something. So it's important when you make a motion and then everybody votes on it that you are accomplishing something. So if your motion does not pass, then you haven't really done anything, you just have, you know, you just say, hey, I think we should do this. And everyone says, no, I don't think we should. That doesn't mean you've done the opposite. At that point, it just means that you've done nothing. So you need to figure out how to word it and how to state it so that you have the right number of people voting for something. So motions must be cleared in proper form, findings of fact, like I said, you know, those aren't typically written. We do them occasionally for more complicated applications like Riverview Flats and you do them verbally for everything. So all your site plans, all your special land uses, all that. We walk through the standards one at a time. And the act requires that you have some kind of findings for your special land uses. And then documentation is the last part. Documentation is really important because while it's all fresh in our minds the day after the meeting, in ten years and a day after the meeting, most of us are going to have forgotten part, at least most or some of what happened at the meeting. So it's important for, you know, our reports to get kept and filed away with everything, the minutes that suit takes, get maintained, obviously, for, basically, the application, the materials, the correspondence, all that official stuff of, that application, it all gets saved and it all gets put in a file. And so it's all together. So in fifteen years, when we're trying to figure out why we let somebody have, you know, fewer trees than were required or whatever it is, or somebody complains or something happens, we need to say, okay, why did we do that? Then we'll go back and we'll figure out what exactly we did and why. And so it's important to be able to keep that documentation accurate moving forward so that us in the future knew what we did in the past. Just a couple more slides here. When working with the public, you know, typically, we like to, you know, see all public comment taken at once. And then, you don't have to respond every time somebody, so some people can come up and ask questions, but this isn't, it's not intended to be a dialogue, public hearing is a date, so the public can come forward, they can present their comments, their concerns, and then you can just say, thank you very much, next. If you ask a question, you can't answer it, if you want to, you don't have to. You should only be responding to things that are directly related to the application. So if somebody comes up to you and goes, why are you guys such a bunch of idiots for even thinking about this? You don't have to respond to that, that's not something that you need to get into. Then obviously, avoid getting into arguments, getting into long, you know, ten minute back and forth conversations with members of the public. And this kind of gets back a little bit to where we were earlier, where it's important that public meetings be handled with some degree of formality. And I think the city has done a really good job, as long as I've been here, both at planning commission and at council generally, for people kind of know the deal, so they know that if they want to speak, they come up here. Sometimes they'll write down their name on a piece of papers, hey, I want to talk, they'll get passed around. So then they'll just call up here, look them up here, they'll speak and say whatever they want, thank you very much, you know, step back down. So that way you can move through it in an orderly fashion, everybody is heard. And no one's feeling left out, no one's feeling like they're kind of left hanging, you know, in the breeze here. You know, you are, you know, when you're here, you are representatives of the people, you are part of your community. You know, people don't always come to meetings to support projects, actually, most people come here to not support projects, as you've probably seen over the years. That's fine, but it's, again, this is getting back to some of the things with regard to order. We need to be clear on that you're here to listen to their concerns, you're there to eventually make a decision. But you, planning commissioners, are appointed, you're not elected, you're not seeking a reelection. So in that sense, you are advisory, you're a little insulated from some of the political issues that can come up for folks who are elected. Transparency is important, so the city should be clear on the meeting format, on time limitations. After the hearing is closed, so after we finish talking about that specific thing and everyone, no one else has something to say, they make that back down, then we transfer over to the planning commission, the planning commission starts talks, and the planning commission talks with another, eventually makes a decision. So we don't want the public hearing to be closed, and then five minutes later, someone's like, oh yeah, I want to come up here and I want to save this and, you know, carry on, have a second public hearing later. Like to keep that as limited as possible, keep the meeting as orderly as possible.
It's a good reminder for all on the commission here that I quite frequently forget to close a public hearing. So I mean, I do it by looking away from them, but just remind me, just, yeah, remind me. It's just something I just don't think of now, so.
Yeah, it's important, I think, in the format of the meeting to have, for the chair to say, okay, now we're going to open the public hearing. Then you go to the public and then, okay, now, seeing as there are no more comments, we're going to close the public hearing. And then when it's closed, then we move up here to the planning commission, you all can have your conversation about it, without being interrupted, without, I think, people jumping in with too much information and things like that. But you can certainly ask questions of the public, so if the applicant's there or if there's a neighbor there that mentions something that you want more information on, then you can say, okay, I have a question for you over there in the audience.
Which we did several times with Riverview Flats.
Yep, and that's okay, but it's just, yeah, but it's just, sometimes it gets a tread lightly because you don't want to, I've seen those devolve quickly into almost losing control of meetings and then, say, well, you're letting that guy talk, I shall let me talk and all this other, I mean, it all happens, so you have to be careful. Working with each other, so like I said, I don't expect you guys to always click your E on any of these decisions, it's important for everybody up here to contribute. You've all been chosen for a variety of reasons, whether it's your ongoing work in the community, your interests, your professions. You make up a very kind of diverse cross-section of the community. And so this is one way that you want to represent, is through that diversity. So it's important that everybody contributes, it's important that everybody asks questions of each other and of staff, so ask me questions, ask Mike questions, ask Sue questions, I don't know why this is, you know, like that. Philosophies might differ, so you both, you all might have different opinions on what's a good project versus a bad project, but at the end of the day, your decisions must be based on the standards of the zoning ordinance. I don't like it because I don't like it isn't good enough. You have to make your decision based on what the zoning ordinance says. All of your deliberations, those people put into the public. You can't avoid being sued, you know, we can avoid it at all costs and we do by doing everything that we've been doing so far. So by documenting everything, by being fair, by treating everyone the same. There are people that have left lots of meetings that have been too unhappy with the decision that the planning commission made, unhappy with the opinion that I gave the planning commission, unhappy with my report. But by using consistent rules, by treating everybody fairly, by not being conflicted, by following the law, you can really isolate yourself from some of those problems. If you follow the right, if you follow your zoning ordinance guidelines, it is very difficult for someone to appeal your decision important then. Some cases are hard to win because as long as you follow the right procedure and apply the standards correctly, you are presumed to have acted reasonably and responsibly. And upon the person challenging you to prove that you would have clearly completely screwed up. And so by being consistent and being fair and following your rules and things like that, you can really help avoid getting into any challenging legal situations. Last thing, a quick touch on is conflict of interest. If you're the applicant, you know, if you want to do a project, obviously you can, you know, apply to yourself to a project. If it's your brother, if it's, if you have a business associate, if you have somebody else who you have very close ties with, then you should not participate in that. So again, let's go back to like, I don't know, Burger King. If somebody, if one of you was directly related, if it was your brother, who was the guy who was going to own the Burger King, then it would be important for you to say, hey, I am conflicted here because this is a family member that would obviously benefit by a positive decision by us. So in that case, it's important that you recuse yourself from that particular item. So you can still come to the meeting, you can participate in every single part of the meeting except for that one agenda item that I talked about that maybe that you are conflicted on. And in that case, you say what the nature of the conflict is, you abstain from voting, you should leave the room entirely. So it's, anyone set by yourself out there, because even sometimes by sitting in the front row, you can, you know, look at people and making faces that are doing whatever and trying to influence people. So it's best to leave the room again, so it is absolutely a hundred percent clear that there is no improper influence, because it gets back to being fair, right? And then in the minutes, obviously, you need to show that, that somebody refused themselves, that they left the room at this time, they rejoined the meeting later, so it's clear again looking forward as to what happened. So just kind of the kind of last item here is, if you have a national plan for a reason, stick to it, that's what you did tonight. And not everything is going to happen in the short term. So there's, I'm sure that you all have a vision for how certain areas of the city should develop, how development should go. It's not going to happen overnight, it might happen for twenty or thirty years. So you have to adopt kind of a long-term perspective on some of this stuff and kind of keep working towards this long-term goal, but it's a long incremental kind of sloping process on a day-to-day type of perspective. But when you get a big opportunity or a big project or a chance to do something big that will really move your plan forward quickly, take advantage of it, you know, do what you can to implement your plan, to fulfill the vision the plan sets out for the community, because those opportunities don't happen every day. You know, every day we have a lot of little stuff, we don't have a lot of big stuff. So when an opportunity comes along for something big, let's, you know, take advantage of it and do the best you can to implement the plan and to move forward. So, I know that was like a lot to digest in twenty or thirty minutes or whatever it was, so are there questions, comments?
I have a question, you said, if you make a motion and it is, you don't have enough votes, you have to make a contrary motion to close it?
Well, you don't have to, but the point is, so let's say there is a development that's controversial and someone says, I make a motion that we approve this, and the vote is two yes and four no. Then, just because more people, just because the majority voted no, it doesn't mean that the project is denied, the application is denied, it just means that it's not approved, if that makes sense. So again, don't do anything, is what I'm saying. So, so what you could do, one option would be to do the opposite, right? Because, I mean, if you're, and it's going to depend on the meeting, but if you're at the point of the meeting where you're ready to do something and y'all don't agree, at some point you will need to make a decision and four people are going to have to vote for the same thing somehow, because you can't just string along forever. So a lot of times, what I would say would be to then make the opposite motion. So if your motion to approve it fails, then one of those four people or five or however many there were that voted against that motion, so then make the opposite motion, basically, okay. Make the motion that we would deny it, and then you'd see, maybe you would get four votes for that, maybe you wouldn't. And if you don't, then maybe those people that didn't vote for it, that didn't vote against it, maybe they just have the other mind here. Maybe they need more information about some part of the application. So other thing that you could do then is table it and figure out what those people need to make up their minds.
So you don't have to make a clear.
You don't have to make the opposite motion, but you do, all I was saying is that if you make a motion and it fails, it doesn't do anything, right? It just, you haven't taken any.
So go back to the drawing table.
Yeah.
You don't have to make the opposite.
You don't have to.
That was my question.
Yeah, no, it's not something that you're required to do.
If it passes, then you've accomplished something.
Yeah.
Even though it might not be you personally, it would mean the council accomplished something.
So, yeah, I mean, so you have to make a decision on everything eventually.
It's taking up the table, it's voted down, it's taking up the table, you just.
Correct, it's.
Just keep the meeting moving.
It's over and done and you move on, or you can table it, obviously, but.
That is the other real alternative to a really thorny question sometimes, is just simply to table it. Just to give everybody a chance to relook at all the information. Usually it's a, you know, a fairly detailed type of request that comes before you. And sometimes it's an emotional order, maybe not, but I mean, it takes more than just one meeting to really kind of think it through in your own mind. And there's nothing wrong with that, I mean, it's our option. The applicant has made the application and he does his job, or our job is to make sure we get the best decision we possibly can. And if that takes two meetings or three meetings, that's what it takes.
The one thing I would add to that is that absolutely table something, if you don't know what to do, but, you know, at some point you will have enough information to make a decision, and you're just going to have to make it. And there's going to, they might be half through and they're just going to be really mad at you for making that decision, but that's.
You have all the facts, you have all the facts, you know what everybody knows on the facts, make a decision.
Yep.
We've had a couple of decisions fairly recently here, Riverview Flats certainly was, been a contentious thing in the community for a number of times, and certainly Mar-a-Lago certainly was contentious. But I think we generally worked through it with an openness with the community so that it made it. The decision at that point, we didn't hear a lot of flak, I mean, and all that, so I thought it was good. I have one request, I was going to do it unremarked, but it probably goes in well here. We have been making amendments to the zoning ordinance. We started what, two or three years ago now, it's been quite a while. Andy, can you bring us up to date next month?